Okay, it is nine o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and call a meeting into order. It is Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed.
Yes. I've got the auditors, August two thousand and twenty-two, revenue expenditure report, the sheriff's, August two thousand and twenty-two, fees, and the treasurers, August two thousand and twenty-two, reconciliation report.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
HBA board meeting this afternoon, planning commission meeting tonight, solid waste management district board tomorrow afternoon, HBA general membership meeting tomorrow night, and then we've got our ARPA money meeting Thursday afternoon. The Campo Capillary Active Transportation Plan, there are some public meetings on Thursday night as well. Okay, I think that's about it until next week.
I had something on my calendar about a Campo sidebar this afternoon.
Yes, tonight at six thirty to eight P. M. It's kind of a kickoff.
Okay.
I'm surprised you didn't have that on your calendar. It's a, just a get-together at the sidebar there at Ash Street.
For Campo?
Yeah.
Let's see, Wednesday is salute twenty-three meeting. There's a meeting Thursday, late afternoon, early evening, Missouri State Museum. Then you mentioned the Campo workshop on Friday? That's what I have.
Okay, I've got the Campo, and I've got Wednesday, tomorrow, Stars and Stripes Luncheon over in Columbia. Thursday, Cap Region Medical Center dedication of their outpatient surgery. Then I've got ARPA and the Sons of American Revolution meeting Thursday night. Friday, I'm pretty open. Saturday, the Daughters of the American Revolution to honor, it's a celebration of the signing of the U.S. Constitution, are ringing the bells in the Capitol Rotunda at three o'clock. And then Sunday is Russellville St. Margaret's Parish Falls upward.
St. Michael's.
St. Michael's, yeah. And then H. C. J. Home Tour. And then Monday, I'm gonna meet with Calibite, so that's all I've got. So we'll go down to resolutions, presentation of retirement resolution to Mark Sparky Eichels. Whereas on September first, two thousand and twenty-two, Mark Eichels retired from his county of Cole, and whereas Mark began his thirty-two years career on January twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety, working for the Cole County Sheriff's Department, only to join the court system in October, two thousand and twenty, as a bailiff marshal, where he was responsible for maintaining order in and outside of the courtroom, and whereas his duties entailed interacting with all players in a court of law, the jury, the judge, the public, and defendants, and whereas, over the years, Mark worked under the authority of many elected officials, including Sheriff John Haymeyer, Sheriff George Brooks, appointed Sheriff Garrett Kempker, Sheriff Greg White, Sheriff John Wheeler, Judge Byron Kinder, Judge Tom Brown, Judge Pat Joyce, Judge Tom Sodergrind, now Supreme Court Judge Paul Wilson, Judge John Beadham, Judge Rich Callahan, a whole bunch of other judges. And then Farmer Commissioner Sharon Davidson, Bob Gratz, Art Earhart, Donnie Stockman, Dave Prisandine, Harry Peters, Bob Jones, a whole bunch of others, and Sam Bushman, Jeff Helscher, and Harry Otto. Whereas most of Mark's friends call him Sparky and are familiar with his favorite quote, "After dealing with the adult abuse docket, I feel really good about myself when I walk out these doors." And whereas Mark is a member of the St. Stanislaus Catholic Church, Orangeville Lions Club, Orangeville Knights of Columbus, and Orangeville City Council, and whereas Mark and his wife Dana have three children, Jordan, Elizabeth, Callum, and two wonderful grandchildren, Knox and Cannon. And whereas during retirement, Mark plans to play a lot of golf, and whatever Dana tells him to do, in January of two thousand and twenty-three, he will start his newly-elected position as Cole County Circuit Clerk. Now therefore be resolved that the people of Cole County do hereby thank and commend Mark Eichels for his years of faithful service and loyalty to the county. We also wish him the best as he starts his new career as the Cole County Circuit Clerk. That is yours.
Work for a lot of people.
One picture.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Sparky.
It's good friends call him by other names as well.
I wasn't gonna go anywhere past.
You mentioned Pee Wee Ford, happy heavenly birthday today, though. Pee Wee Ford.
Yeah.
And if you ever got a phone call from him on your birthday, it was always very entertaining, because he sang it.
Yeah.
If you saw the call, you let it go to voicemail, because it's just, you wanted to add.
Yeah. And I ran into Jane over at Cap Region a couple of weeks ago, and it's been like a year since Pee Wee passed. So, okay, bids and contracts, approval and signing of MODOT agreement for FRE grant for multimodal transload facility project.
So this is another item related to the project we've been working on. This is for the MODOT freight enhancement grant. We received, that grant an amount of eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The agreement basically just spells out the procedures for receiving the money and the project phases and what's required. Standard MODOT agreement, they've gone to DocuSign now for all agreements, and I worked with Jill to get that approved and okayed for the commission to sign. So Jill has assured that that's all ready to go. They've also asked that there be an authorizing resolution signed by the county commission to basically authorize the presiding commissioner and the auditor to expend the funds and whatnot. So that's an item here that goes along with the DocuSign copy of the agreement. So I would just recommend approval of this agreement and then signature on the authorizing resolution. Any questions?
I don't think so.
Okay.
You got the agreement signed, or do you have it?
It's right here, but it's, again, it's DocuSign.
Oh, it's DocuSign.
Yeah.
So you probably want to make a motion to approve Sam signing that agreement through DocuSign?
That's the resolution.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Sam signing Missouri Highway's and Transportation Commission agreement for a freight enhancement program through DocuSign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Here's.
Oh, I was looking at it.
Oh, okay.
Do you need to make a motion to sign the resolution, too?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to sign the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval and signing of contract amendment for childcare health consultation contract.
Good morning. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education contacted us about doing some additional training for childcare providers, some CPR and AED training. So they're giving us an additional two thousand dollars to this contract so we can buy another set of mannequins, and we can provide the training for the childcare providers. So this is just an additional two thousand dollars for that contract.
I'll make a motion to adopt and sign the Contract Agreement Amendment One with the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Contract title is the Child Healthcare Consultation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of Stryker Soul Source.
Today I'm just needing approval and signing of the Stryker Soul Source form. It's for the EMS Equipment Lease Plan. This has already ran in the paper, and we're still working on a few items with the contract, but once we get the contract done, we'll bring it back on the agenda. So today I'm just needing the form signed.
We're still working through the contract items, doing our due diligence that you requested. Hopefully, we'll have something for you next week in terms of more information and possible contracts.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve signing the Stryker Soul Source.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So unfinished business, we are going to go into the Assessor's two thousand and twenty dash two thousand and twenty-three Maintenance Plan, which it's something we've been going over.
I don't have it on my agenda.
No, we, it's, this is just unfinished business.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But anyway, we have to sign it in order to get some reimbursement. He had, he's done a revised maintenance plan, but then he took his narrative from one page to three pages, and I think we have a little bit of concern with his narrative. So I believe we're gonna respond.
Two years, two years ago, our auditor had a concern with the narrative, so Kristen Bearhorst, our auditor, two years ago, sent a letter to the State Tax Commission for them to consider as they approved the two-year plan and the Assessor's narrative. And I suggest that this year, we send a letter, in some cases perhaps refuting some of the items in the narrative, not in the plan itself, but in the narrative, with respect to DevNet for the most part. And I talked, no, I'm sorry, I traded emails yesterday with Jeff Schmidt of the State Tax Commission. He says that the actual plan with the narrative that has been submitted will go to the State Tax Commission on September thirtieth. We do need to agree to the plan in order for the Assessment Fund to receive the dollars from the State Tax Commission. But there was another item in the narrative that caught my attention, which was, as I recall, the Assessor says there'll be ten thousand letters going out next year to parcel owners in Cole County. And if he would come here, I was going to ask him what, if that's unusual, which I think it is, what, what, what is the, what's the cause of a ten thousand dollar letter, ten thousand letters versus perhaps less than a thousand, which has been the history? So what we need to do today, I think, is agree to sign the signature page so that there's no, there's no question about the Assessment Fund will receive the reimbursement, or not reimbursement, but a payment from the State Tax Commission for doing the reassessments of all the parcels.
Yeah, I think when we signed it, we weren't saying, we agree with it for him necessarily.
Well, I have a bit, yeah, you're, I agree with Jeff, and I had a bit of an issue with our signature, with the cover page says December fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-one, and we're signing it on September the thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. But that's the, that's the date that will go next to our signature.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion that we sign the signature page of the, it's the.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, two-year maintenance plan submitted by the Assessor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we do need to write a letter of rebuttal. Could I consider his three-page rant?
It's not necessarily rebuttal in all cases, but it is our, it is the commission's statement, and you're helping with that.
We've gotten some information from DevNet with.
Yeah, I talked to the State Tax Commission.
Okay.
And they said that that's happened before.
Okay.
Okay, we've got that done. New business, Accounts Payable Review.
I would ask for approval of accounts payable. I think we're doing key cards for the sheriff, so I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number Ten.
This is ten thousand dollars. It's for the Cole County Clerk's office, and this is the grant they received for the HAVA election security, and I do need action today.
I'll make a motion to sign Court Order Number Ten for ten thousand dollars for the, that's just general revenue fund, so that's all I need to approve.
With the county clerk's HAVA grant.
Okay, for the Cole County clerk's HAVA grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number Eleven.
This is for four thousand dollars for the County Health Department, and this is the childcare health program, a grant for the Health Department. I do need approval today.
All right, make a motion to sign Court Order Number Eleven for four thousand dollars for the Cole County Health Department for the, I couldn't write as fast as I was saying that, for childcare training, provider training.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I think we'll put these two together, signing of support letters for Stronghold Landing Development and for Oakleaf Villas Development. We've already done this for Bo West and his development out east, so we need housing for workforce, so to me, I just.
You got the letters?
I do.
Oh.
Yeah, I do.
I'll make a motion that we sign the support letter for Stronghold Landing Development. Let's do it in two.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion to sign the support letter for Oakleaf Villas Development.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approval and signing of Change Order Number One, two thousand and twenty-two Asphalt Overlay Program.
So this change order is for Jefferson Asphalt Company, typically striping as performed by the Cole County Public Works crews on the annual overlays. After discussion with the striping crew, it was decided to have the contractor install the striping on the county parking lots. Contractor shall lay out and install a new striping to match the previous that was installed. Overall, this change order is an increase by two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that to spray enough time for them to do other things?
Well, with the, the parking lots, it's a little bit harder for them to lay them out and stripe them by hand, so we'll get a, hopefully, a better, a little more professional-looking layout with this, so.
Okay.
Our crews can do the work, but they're not geared to do that, and there's professional companies that do parking lots all the time, and they'll be able to get it done a lot quicker and cheaper than our guys.
It's, it's, it's hard to park between wavy lines if you don't have a wavy vehicle. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign Change Order Number One on the two thousand and twenty-two Asphalt Overlay Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval and signing of Change Order One for Woods Crossing.
So this is for GWH Landscape Contracting, and this is actually for the final closeout document, Woods Crossing. Primary reason for additional cost was an increase in the amount of pavement curb repair, curb removal, concrete pavement, drive approaches, type A curb gutter, and then type five aggregate base. The additional aggregate base is related to the removal and disposal of unsuitable subgrade. There were four additional change orders. One and three were due to a crossroad pipe that had deteriorated beyond repair. Before the contractor replaced the pavement, the crossroad pipe was replaced. And then number two was the removal and disposition of the unsuitable subgrade found after the pavement was removed. Change Order Four is a replacement of an undersized stormwater pipe off of Homeland Drive. Overall, this change order is an increase in construction by one hundred and two thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. And on the delivery on the Homeland Drive, stormwater pipe. So the county has a Stormwater Management Advisory Committee that is a subcommittee of the Road and Bridge Advisory Board, and they meet twice a year. It's required that we have this committee. DNR requires it as far as our, for our MS four permit. And basically, the, the committee just looks at stormwater complaints or maybe issues that citizens have that maybe they don't have a good forum to approach the county with. We get calls and concerns about stormwater things from time to time, and occasionally, we'll tell the people it's, it's their responsibility. It's not a county responsibility. For example, if it's in somebody's backyard, draining water between yards. In this case, they approached us and wanted to be on the agenda, and we brought it to the committee. Harry's a member of the committee as a member of the Road and Bridge Advisory Board. And out of, out through the meeting, we investigated ahead of time and found that we thought maybe there was an undersized pipe that could be contributing to the problem. They were getting not so much water in their homes, but coming close, and it was causing a pretty big problem for them. So we took it through the process, had an engineering company look at it, do some, run some hydraulics on it, and found that the pipe was undersized. So what grew of that, we had the contractor there working on Woods Crossing real close by, and we were happy with the work he had done on that project and others previously, and went ahead and had him give us some prices to, to do this project. And it'll involve primarily just replacing the pipe. And then there was a junction box or a manhole that was installed that had what they call like a beehive grate on top, and it was undersized as well. And so they'll put a brand-new junction box slash area inlet to capture that water, and then the pipe will be upsized as well. So first time we've actually, through this committee, we haven't had a whole lot of agenda items from citizens, but this is the first one that's actually going through the process, found an issue, and correcting it. So it'll, it'll be a good benefit to the citizens out there.
This is a great solution. I want to compliment the, the committee, but I also want to compliment the residents who showed up, how cordial and concerned, but calm and collected. They made their, they made a good, made their points well taken, and this is a good solution. And it's, it's kind of convenient that we had these other folks working over, not, not far away to make this happen.
Yeah, the process worked very well, and again, echoing what Harry said, the citizens out there were very easy to work with. And sometimes when you have these issues, you can be a little disgruntled and whatnot, and that wasn't the case here. It was, like I said, very cordial, and the process worked as it's, as it should, so.
Do you have some before and after pictures when we go back to Woods Crossing? Because that was a big deal, too.
Yes, we, I'm sure we do.
I can find some, and I'll talk to the inspectors, see what they have.
That.
That was that turn, right?
Yes, and it was in very poor condition through the project, doing the complete replacement in the area. But then we also had some spot little patches on the rest of the road.
Yeah.
So Woods Crossing is now one hundred percent fixed up and in good condition. We have more work to do out there through the process and identifying the areas. We'll work on that over the next year or two to try to get everything brought up, but that was a good project to get completed.
Yep, I'm good. But you brought us two increases, so next one should be a decrease.
I'll offer a motion to approve and sign Change Order Number One on Woods Crossing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's gonna be increases, but we're getting a lot done.
Well, that project specifically, to do it at the same time you had the other stuff going on, made it significantly less than, judging the deal later on.
Very convenient for the bill that way.
Yeah, I appreciate you all.
Okay, boy, we zipped through that. Our next scheduled meeting is.
We've got some other stuff. What are you talking about? Because there was something that was on the agenda that got taken off. That Sparky was gonna talk to us about the, uh, doing an audit before he takes office. And so when he emailed me, I emailed back and said that I would check with him and see if he wanted to take it off. So I didn't realize it was taken off. It was still, when I looked at it on my phone, it was still on there this morning. So I don't know. I think we need to have a policy, remember, put something on the agenda, get to take it off, so we know something's being taken off. I know you had made some points about maybe doing it after the general election, but I think there's still some questions on who initiates the process, how big of an audit it is. I mean, Sparky's here, he can ask the questions if we want to get him answered later on. Just getting him some answers. It doesn't have to happen right now, but he went on the agenda, and I think it's only fair to allow him to ask the questions, so.
The Circuit Clerk is really, you know, they're paid by the state. It's, it's not really an office that we, we can do anything with, other than we provide, you know, office space.
Who says, who says who audits it?
I don't know if the.
That's, that's the answer we need right now, because I don't think we're getting clear answers from anybody. Everybody's pushing it off on someone else.
I'll give you a little history, personal history, that when I was a deputy state auditor, I received a phone call from Judge Pat Joyce. Almost, it was a phone call, but it was almost like a court order, which was, get up here and bring an auditor with you. Are you the auditor that went with me? No, it was Randy, another fellow. Okay. And it was a question about the Circuit Clerk's, some procedures going on there. So it was a judge who got the attention of the state auditor to make it happen then. Where I have a little bit of concern here is that I think this guy will be on the first day of January, either that day or shortly there, before that, he'll be sworn in as the next Circuit Clerk. But today, he's a civilian, like, he, he's not. I, I don't think he can, I mean, he can request, he can request an audit, but he can't.
I was just asking questions about it, how the process happens after he gets elected or after he takes office January one, and I think there's no clear answer to it, because there's county money involved up there, too. So I just think it's, it needs to be looked at, and we need to get some clear answers. Because when I talked to him about it, I had the same thoughts as you, Harry. And, you know, Sammy made a good comment about, well, let's wait till after the general election until he take office. But I think that any elected official has the right to come in with the book starting at zero or balanced. So, you know, as much as I don't want to have to listen to him, I still kept him on the agenda. Saw him over the weekend, and so that's why I didn't want it off the agenda, and that's why I emailed back and said, I will check with him and let you know. And then just this morning is when I saw it was taken off.
So do we need to talk to Judge Beadham yet?
Not necessarily. I may have muddied the waters by bringing that up, but much of what's done in the Circuit Clerk's office is controlled by OSCA, the Office of State Courts Administrator, isn't it?
They will not, they will not do anything.
Well, we, the statute that applies to our own auditor does give him some discretion, am I right, Mark? In art, in, in doing audits of courts, is what it's, how it's phrased. So I think when you have the title and the authority and been sworn in, that's the time the request should be made.
Sure.
Sure.
So I, you want me to come up there? So my question is, I'm going to walk into an office that I know has misappropriation of funds, and I'm going to walk into an office with dirty books. I don't, I do not want to do that. I want to clear it up before I walk in. And the last audit was 2012, so 10 years ago. And I think, yeah, you were the deputy auditor at the time. I want to walk in with clean books. I don't want to walk in with books that I know for a fact there's misappropriation of funds going on. Somebody needs to check into this. And I've brought it up all the way back in March already to several people, some in this room.
I just want to clarify, the audits are always done by the state, not by the county.
Yes, and that's what I'm requesting.
So I don't know how you can request that on these guys. I don't...
I don't know. That's, I just want answers. I just didn't know where we needed to go with this. So that's why I'm here.
The judge would be an option, presiding judge of the...
Yeah, you're right. Already talked to him. So I know when people take office, leave office, they usually do an audit of it, especially when there's money involved. And there is county funds involved, so.
I understand it, but just putting on my CPA hat for just a second, an auditor can't walk in there knowing what the solution or the results are going to be. They go in there with an open mind, that show me the books, and then I'll make, I'll opine on whether or not there's anything.
Correct. And that's basically what I'm requesting. Just need answers. I've asked for this since March, when I decided to run. So everything would be up and up. And even if I won or lost, I still think there needs to be an audit of that office.
So did you, you say you did ask the presiding judge?
Yes, sir.
Did you get an answer?
I'm working on it.
Okay, well, that...
I think he's out.
He is.
But I think next week.
The last audit took nine months, guys. That's why I started in March. We're already into September. I'm going to be walking in in January with no audit done. That's why I asked in March.
I appreciate that. At the same time, though, you're not responsible for anything that happened before you got there.
I guess I'm not, but it's still county funds, too. And I am a county taxpayer. And I know there's something wrong going on, and that's why I'm requesting this.
Well, not to get too far in the weeds on this, but is it county dollars?
I don't know what's up there, Harry. I honestly...
Well, I mean, where is the source of dollars that are deposited there? We do furnish, we furnish place for the circuit clerk and staff to be.
Correct, correct.
But do we send money over there?
I don't know that you do.
We receive money. We receive some of the fees on some of the charges on some of this, and the jail dates.
The jail costs.
But we don't send money.
It's a fine line. It's state money that operates the office, pays the people. Actually, some of the folks that view this are going to be confused about a guy who we're recognizing as retiring on September 1. And your retirement is about this long, right? Because you're being sworn in.
In January, yes, yes.
Probably last week of December, so that you show up on the 2nd.
And I will be here.
Okay. You get...
Perhaps when Judge Bean gets, or Judge Bean, when Judge Beadham gets back, we can meet with him and just...
I'm fine with that. I just want to get the ball rolling.
Yeah.
And that's what it came down to, and we talked about it. And keeping it on the agenda was just wants to know what the process is and who initiates it. And if it's January 1st or January 2nd, then so be it. But we just had no answers. Exactly. I think we're getting a bunch of different answers or a bunch of, not main. And so if it's where we need to start at.
And I can actually email Judge Beadham while he's, and just tell him we want to meet with him.
I think he knows we do. I've kind of got the word to him. Other problems that we're taking care of, so. So you're going to talk to Judge Beadham?
Judge Beadham, yeah.
It's not something we had to know tomorrow, everything, but just wanted to bring it up. As long as we're not getting different answers.
I will email him.
It's my understanding, though, Harry, that the statute can, can, or provides the county commission can request an audit, the state statute.
Requested...
Request it from the state?
Yes, you can request an audit of the clerk's office.
What, that's the clerk or the circuit clerk?
Circuit.
Okay.
Yes.
Some, you know, a lot of folks don't know the difference.
No, I understand that. I'm getting home, closing home.
But then again, and not to slow any audit thing down, is a lot of times when there's a request for the state auditor to show up, there's also a price tag for the state auditor to show up. If there's a petition audit, in other words, the citizens of Cole County could actually, I think, have a petition for the state auditor to show up. And if they get enough signatures, the state auditor will show up, will do the audit, and will send a bill.
They did that Clay County.
Clay County, okay. I think right now, the direction is, it's almost like in Judge Beadham's lap right now. But he may not know that.
I will reach out to him.
I mean, I would want fresh books if I was coming in. But I don't think you can really start looking at fresh books until after January 1. So I think it's, we can start now anyway.
When Mark Richardson took over for Bill Tagg, he had state auditors come in to audit those funds.
I was involved in that.
Isn't money given to the county?
If you want a clean cutoff.
From the funds, from the judge's funds and... Isn't money given to the county from the judge's funds to do an audit? That's something we need to check into.
No, we haven't gotten any funds from the judges.
Well, maybe you were going with this, Marcus. If you want a clean cutoff, start with new accounts.
When I was with the state auditors, we got asked that all the time. The statutes did not require the state auditor to do a cutoff audit every time an elected county official, a new county official took over. We got requested a lot, but we just didn't have an auditor to do that, so. Anyway, I would, my personal opinion is you'd be better served to get a clean cutoff audit through the end of December. That's just my personal opinion, so.
What does that entail, Mark?
Yes.
Well, the audit would have to be done after the 1st of the year in order to look at everything, all the books of your predecessor, so.
For going back or just at that moment, what the balance is of?
Oh, you could do both.
You look at history.
Certainly look at the balances and then also look back at whatever concerns that you have specifically.
Well, I would be happy if you get with Judge Beadham immediately. Let's get working on this and find out where we're at. So, and I appreciate your time, Lord. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, one more thing, because we've got an email from county clerk about working on November 8th, which that week also is a holiday week on that Friday, I believe, November 11. And we've historically taken overtime that work over eight hours on that election day.
Yes, it doesn't always fall, Election Day doesn't always fall in a holiday week. Sometimes it does. Well, then if it does, then of course, that counts against their overtime hours. So we work 16, 17 hours on Election Day. And then if we're off on Friday, well, then they get cut out of their time and a half, their comp time. So years previously, the commission's allowed us to go ahead and get the comp time if election fell into a holiday week. So Veterans Day falls in this week, this year in November. So we're asking if you would approve us to get, let the staff get their overtime hours that week.
And that's our history, the commission's history?
Don could speak on that probably. It's been done in the past almost every week, I think. Debbie could, too.
They have gave special exception, just during the week of the election.
Right.
If the holiday falls, not any other time that they would work, so.
It's about five hours, probably, five hours.
Well, we'd probably be giving you credit for the whole holiday, which would be eight hours.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to understand, whether, but...
It's just a special situation. It's a different situation. And it's not something that we're giving them a volunteer option to work. It's, they've got to do it for the election. So I think it's only fair that they still get it.
If the statute were changed so that the election was on the first Tuesday, rather than the first Tuesday after the first Monday, right? We wouldn't run into this as often. Okay. I have no objection to your request.
I don't either. I just...
Good, Debbie?
All right, so, yeah, I think Debbie just needed us to approve it. Apparently, getting rid of that email, then I can believe one more.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
Okay.
Wow, 40 minutes.
Yeah. Oh, and next week, we would like to maybe do a limited agenda, because we are invited to a presentation over at the Governor's State Office Building at 10:30. So we'll have our regular meeting, but we'll...
You're just not going to let me ask questions?
Where, where is the event?
At the Governor's State Office Building.
The Governor's State Office?
Governor's, Governor Hotel.
Oh, it's at the GOB, the Governor Office Building.
Governor Office.
It's not a state building.
Governor, whatever.
You can't throw this term around too loosely as to what is state and what is not, right?
Yeah, Governor Hotel.
Governor Office Building. The hotel closed.
Okay, so.
We'll mark that on the agenda.
And the time of that meeting is?
Is 10:30.
Okay, we'll be good.
Yeah, we should be. Okay. Motion to stand and recess?
I don't know. It's kind of early.
LB, you have anything to amend the order?
I'll tell you. I gotta, I gotta, you know, be done so I can, Joe and I get to... Yeah, we need to, we need to dock to sign this, so.
I have a quick question. I don't know I'm not supposed to speak, but why are we meeting on the 15th?
Yeah, it's for our discussing.
So that is a public meeting?
Oh, yes.
Okay, then we'll still have the next meeting next Tuesday also?
Yes.
So this is an additional meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'm making motions standing in recess until 4:30. It might die.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to call you Dave Wallace.
When I lose a few dollars, you're going to...
Depr.